I'd like to call, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Would you stand, but before we say the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd like to recognize the victims of nine eleven for the moment of silence.
Would you join with me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first action item tonight is approval or alteration of the agenda. Could I get a motion to approve? Jeremy, could I have a second? Pam? Any discussion?
I'd like to, if possible, add, under Superintendent's Business, a category for student and staff recognition.
Could I get an amendment to add the student recognition? Matt, could I have a second? Tim, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comment. This meeting is held in public according to the open meetings law. It is not a public participation meeting. As a board, we value input from the public and we have reserved time in the agenda for public comment. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. If you would like to address the board, please state your name, address, and topic you wish to cover on the sheet provided at the back table. After speaking, please give this sheet to the clerk. Do we have any public comment at this time? Jerry?
(inaudible) I think we still got it wrong because I have a comment about tonight's agenda. So, general comments regarding purchases in general and FPE change orders in particular as are tonight's agenda. Where possible, change orders should be submitted and approved prior to work being completed. If your work is a result of the emergency request, an emergency request, that change order should be reviewed and approved as soon as possible. Change order GC-10 for $138,000 for asbestos removal was generated on June 4th and has not been submitted for board approval until this meeting. There have been at least two previous meetings where this could have been a catch. This is just inaccurate business practice. Change orders regarding a change in scope are never an emergency and should be brought for approval prior to any work being started. Specifically, change order GC-14 for $135,000 for additional paving and regrading at the middle school should have required prior approval by the board. Issuance of a purchase commitment, this amendment without track or approval is a clear violation of district policy and potentially a violation of the emergency schedule. Change order EC-2 was issued on 8/17 and calls for a corresponding credit of $17,000 from the general contractor. Yet there is no corresponding change order at this time. Not issuing the corresponding credit in kindly fashion is poor financial management and increases the probability of the credit being lost. We would like to ask the board to remove EC-2 from the consent agenda and the change order from the general contractor with the corresponding credit is submitted for approval. That is just inaccurate business practice. These are basic project management skills and requirements. This combined with the (inaudible) state readiness, or should I say the lack of readiness of the schools on the first day of school. I can only say I am disciplined with the general contractor and the administration personnel (inaudible).
Thank you. No, Kathy's. That's okay, we'll pass it down. Jerry, normally, we do not respond to public comments, but I think some of the issues you raised may be addressed in the Superintendent's Report tonight. Next item on the agenda are board member comments. Do we have any board members who wish to comment? Jeremy?
We had the opportunity last week to go through and see all the changes that have happened here at the district through the project. First, I'd like to say that I'm excited to see the building updates and the new fresh looks our buildings are getting. However, throughout the process of completing the scheduled work, there have been some hiccups, to put it very lightly. The capital project is necessary and the results for our district are well worth the work that is being finished up at this time. On that note, there's no board member or even our current superintendent who has been involved with this project from the beginning. We've all inherited this project at different stages. There are a lot of people who have been here and involved since the outset, and we'd like to thank them. Although there are too many to name, we want to make sure that these folks know that their work has not gone unnoticed. Greg, Bob have worked closely with the project managers and others to get things wrapped up as soon as possible. This has meant extra hours, including holidays, weekend time, along with late nights, meetings to discuss different aspects of the project, and to work out the best way to get the work completed quickly and correctly, and countless phone calls to keep them informed of what was happening at different sites throughout the district. The board had the opportunity to tour the sites, and during that one hour, I had the opportunity to count five phone calls that Bob took, and the look on his face and the stress level told us, none of them were to say, "Project's done." The scope goes far beyond these two men, though. We would like to also commend the grounds and maintenance crew for keeping on top of unforeseen occurrences. The custodial crew for being there to keep cleaning up the dirt, dust, and debris that was left in the wake of the contractors. The administrators for being the point people in their buildings, for the concerned teachers coming in and seeing some of the work not completed. And the teachers, some of whom couldn't get into their rooms to set up for the first day of school until a day or two before. I've personally heard parents tell me how calm their child's teachers were while greeting the student on Wednesday before school opened and explaining, "This is our classroom, but this isn't how it's going to look for the whole year." Overall, the project has been a huge success. Besides making our district's buildings safer and more physically sound, there's something I noticed that has happened that I'm willing to bet that the organizers of the project did not foresee. When aspects of the project went over the completion time, or something was done wrong and had to be redone, or district employee, our district employees at every level have made sure the school district was still running smoothly. People have stepped up to make sure that the kids' needs are being met in a safe and comfortable environment, even though some of the work is yet to be completed. That is why the board feels we are the best district around. All of the people who are employed here go above and beyond for our students. This project is for today's and the future's students. All aspects of the projects will be completed, and we want to thank all employees for doing their best to make sure our school year rolls out in a positive and successful way. Thank you.
Are there other board member comments? Carla?
I just wanted to say, we, as Jeremy said, all the board members, I believe, have toured all the buildings. Last Wednesday, most of us were on a two-hour tour, and we didn't make it to Freewill. Well, Freewill's my liaison school, so I made it a point to get there before today's meeting and to look at the work that had been done there. And because that was, it holds a very special place in my heart, I was so pleased to see the Cubbies, because I really worried about how it was going to impact putting those Cubbies into a classroom. And I went there right as the buses left, so I saw a lot of teachers, and they reassured me that they're happy. And one thing that it has done with the Cubbies is it's given a more of a closed-off, normal, because it's an open-walled school, a closed feeling. And I just got a very good feeling from the staff that were there. There's still some glitches with the kitchen, but the staff was just very pleased with what had been done and what's continuing to be done, and they know that they have the board's support. And I thought that was very stressed to me by many, many of the faculty that I saw today. So, Bob, great job. The Cubbies were so cute, I wanted to hang my coat in them.
Are there any other board comments?
Just like to comment on, just the other night, some of us went over, and Jeremy was already there. We got to the PTO for OP and OE a little late, but it was nice to see that there was 15 to 20 community members there to help out. Other years, I've been there and I've seen two or three, so it's nice to see the community taking part in the school and working on the activities that the PTO would be doing. So, it's a good, positive thing for having that many people start taking part in that.
Any other board member comments? Phil?
Ron, first, I'd like to ask the board to add an item to the agenda for the following We had had a public comment asked, and then I think we had a follow-up email sent with a question, and part of that public comment was asking to update the question-and-answer section of our district website. And I think the comment was made along the lines of having submitted questions and then not seeing them updated on the website. So, and then this, since that has occurred, I did notice at least one or a couple of questions have been added. But I'd like to add to the agenda for an upcoming meeting, it doesn't have to be the next, but at some point, I'd like to get maybe a clear answer to the board as to exactly how it occurs, when questions are submitted, how do they get posted, who posts them, can we, I noticed when I looked at them, they weren't timed or date stamped. So, you know, if we could maybe get an update for some of our new board members and clarification for some of us that have all the experience of one year, how exactly it looks? Because I would like to make sure that we all understand that, so if it comes up again in a public comment, we have a good answer. And the last thing, if I could just, I know I printed out this email, I can't find it.
Go ahead, use your phone.
I'm going to pull out my phone against protocol and waste time while I try and find this email. But I will preface this by saying that I think all of the board members had showed up at the first day, the assembly for all the staff. And it was a, it was a refreshing, positive feeling to that day. But more importantly than how I felt, the board had received an email from a staff member, and I wanted to share it. If I can find it. I got it right there. All right. This is how it reads, and the board has read it, but I think it's worth repeating to everybody. "I wanted to take a minute to thank the Wayne Central Board of Education for providing us with two teacher days to begin the school year. The extra time was very valuable for organizing my room and meeting with colleagues." I think what's being said there is, "Thanks for a couple of extra days to sift through the dust," but it was well worth it. But more importantly, they go on to say, "Opening day at the pack was upbeat and filled with positivity. Thank you for your willingness to serve and to the board for supporting staff, for supporting our families and staff members." So, I really thought that was nice to hear from a staff member that the good feeling of that day was noticed.
Any other board member comments at this time? If not, let's turn to the Superintendent's Report.
I borrow you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you very much for all members of the board, and certainly, special thanks to Bob and Greg. The facilities project, as Jeremy said, it was consuming, but I think we're in a good place, and we'll continue to button up the punch item list, and I think people are in a good place. I do think we had a great opening, we had a lot of fun, and we also, as a district, received good feedback on that, so we are happy and excited about that. And as we move forward, today's agenda, as you can see, we're going to talk, we had a couple of student-staff recognitions, which I'd like to be a part of my Superintendent Reports as we move forward, and I'm going to talk a little bit about that. We're going to have a facilities preservation project update. For board members who didn't get to the opening, we did show a series of slides, and Greg reviewed where we were at and where we were done, and we thought it would be a great idea to review it with this board and also for the public, and also for, to have it taped so that we, anyone who wants to visit it can see that report. But in addition to that, Greg, I asked Greg to do a report on the financial status of the project and how the change orders impact that. And so I think that'll be a good report, and then we are going to talk a little bit about some change orders that we need actions for. And I think that's, again, where some of Jerry's comments, hopefully, we can address some of them. And we will continue to work to make sure that change orders get to the board in a timely, in a timely fashion. I think you'll hear some of those change orders. While they may not have been clearly emergencies, they were emergency in the sense that they were delaying, potentially delaying the opening or our ability to function on an opening day. But agree that we need to work to make sure that we follow our policy, and we will continue to sharpen up our pencils and timeline to do that. Joe, then, is going to talk a little bit about academic update. And in that update, we're going to, again, we did some, we shared some academic updates on opening day, so again, a portion of that is going to be a review, but we want to share with the board again and the community through this meeting, some of the great things that we've achieved over the last couple of years as a district. That's kind of our benchmark, that's what we're going to be working towards this year. And then, there's a conflict of interest form that we need to discuss for, just from a conversation perspective. So, at this time, I'd like to, I'd like to just quickly announce that three Wayne Central High School students have been selected to participate in New York State School Association's Conference All-State Music Groups. They would be, Tyler Heck was selected as a member of the mixed chorus. Greg Meisensaw was selected as a member of the symphonic band, and Cameron Priest was selected as a member of the wind ensemble. So, you know, I lost my, I misplaced my glasses someplace today, so I'm struggling with that. We want to congratulate those students. It's a great start off to the school year, so we wish them the best of luck, and we'll be looking for some reports from them and how they make out in the competition. And then, at this time, I think we're going to ask Greg to come up and talk a little bit about the facilities project update, and Greg has some people with him that are going to help him out as well, so please join us.
(inaudible) I'd just like to give you a quick update on the project, and it will include financial information, since on tonight's agenda, there's a number of change orders that we're asking the board to consider. With me is Tim Wosley, he's with La Chaise Construction, our construction manager. You guys all know Bob and I, we're at the facilities, and I follow what Jeremy said. I thanked Bob on opening day, and I'll continue to thank Bob for the tremendous job he's done. He deals with (inaudible). He's the driving force behind this whole project, and, you know, it wouldn't be where it is without his dedication, so I thank him for that.
So, we start with the concession stand, and the picture on the left shows you our former concession stand, which still stands out there because it contains all the power and the switching for our lights, for our fields. That will be used for storage. And on the right is the new concession stand, which was open last Friday for our first home contest, which is what we committed to, and I believe it was a great success. We had some tremendous cooperation from the football boosters. They worked very well with us, but we got everything in there. They were able to, you know, do concessions for our opening football game, and, you know, I think people are pleased with what's out there. High school flooring, on the left, shows you our previous floors that were installed in our last project. We had a problem with the tile, the field tile, which is the white tile, was failing throughout the district in the hallways and the classrooms. That's all been replaced. On the right is a picture of a classroom with the new tile. This facility here has all brand-new tile, so we've taken care of that safety issue. This is a picture of the high school, one of the hallways. On the left is the hallway with the old tile removed, and on the right shows you the new floor pattern with the new floor tile installed. High school cafeteria, you can see some of the improvements here. We've gone from three lines to four, and a whole different concept where the students are able to go in and do like a U, get their food, and then go to an island where the cashiers are. So, we will be able to serve the students more efficiently and quicker. You also see some improvements to the fire doors and whatnot, so really, and also the cooking area is much safer now. Before, some of the ladies, when they took things out of the oven, they had to actually close the oven while they're holding the hot pan before they could put it in the warmer. That's no longer an issue, all that's been addressed, and, you know, now there's a lot of room back there, and it's a much safer operation. High school main office, this is the passive restraint system. Unfortunately, we're still waiting for the glass, so it's a semi-passive restraint system at the time. But once it's finished, it'll match what we have at the other buildings, where people come to the outside door, they push the button on speaker. If appropriate, they're buzzed into the foyer area, and then they have to come into the main office and actually sign in before they can get into the rest of the building. So, it's something that we've done in three out of our five buildings, and now the high school has it, and once OE office is done, they'll have it, so all five buildings will have that safety feature. This is middle school generator. On the left is the old generator from 1967, and on the right is the new, more efficient generator. And just a reminder that our middle school serves as a Red Cross Disaster Center. Hopefully, we don't want to have to use that in the near future, but we do serve that for the community. Middle school got new boilers. On the left, you can see the old boilers, and on the right, you can see the new, much smaller, much more efficient boilers. Part of our energy performance project, helping us keep our energy costs down. Middle school cafeteria also had work done to it. On the left was the serving area with everything taken out. On the right are the new serving lines. They also got a new freezer and new equipment there. They also got fire doors, similar to what you have here. Once again, it should help the kids get through the lines more efficiently and help the staff provide safer preparation of the food. Pavement restoration, you can see on the left, this is the front of middle school with the pavement torn up. On the right is a picture of the pavement, pavement fully installed, and we'll talk a little bit more when we get to the change orders about, one of the change orders that was over $100,000, we can give you an explanation on how that occurred. These are the Cubbies that Mrs. Borman referred to. This became an issue for the district. Our insurance carrier does a risk assessment, visit with us every year, and they had noted that the Cubbies at Freewill, with the hooks being in the hallway, were a safety concern, so we were able to come up with this concept. Donna Rizzo had a large hand in coming up with this design as well, but I also had the opportunity to visit Freewill, and I think they look fantastic as well, so I think it really puts a nice touch onto that building, and I believe the staff is very happy with what the finished product. Over at Freewill, in the original gym, the floor was separating, so on the left was the old floor. On the right is a picture of the new floor that's installed over there, so no longer a safety hazard for the students over at Freewill. And this was one of the areas that we did not get completed on time. The main office at Ontario Elementary School, Mrs. Armitage was gracious enough to be able to stay in her temporary location. If there was something that we couldn't get completed, we chose this because we're waiting for the glass for some of the windows, but also, her temporary location was just a couple of doors down from the main office, whereas the high school, they were all the way down in D-Wing, so that never would have worked from opening day piece. So, and now, we've committed the full construction staff to working on that, so hopefully, it'll be ready in about the next week or so. Ontario Elementary got new restrooms on the second and third floor. This is a picture before the partitions were put in, but new tile on the floor, new tile on the walls, all new fixtures, really dresses that building up quite nice. Ontario Primary, in parts of the building, the, this is part that used to be carpeted when we had the BOSI's program in our building. Carpet was put in for that program in the BOSI space from 1992. Carpet lasted quite a long time, but it was definitely time to replace that, so we removed that and put in new, fresh floor tile. And the adult bathrooms, or actually, I think they can also be student bathrooms in the main corridor, right past the lunchroom at OP, were also renovated, and this is a picture of what they, what the new bathrooms look like. The front facade at OP also got new panels underneath the windows, you can see that on the picture on the right. And OP also got all brand-new windows. We had water damage from the previous windows were leaking, so I think it's really done a nice job in dressing up that building. And part of the project, as a safety item, we put installed sidewalks around all of our buildings, so now for emergency egress, if the students have to evacuate the building, they have the ability to stay on the sidewalk. Before, we had concrete pads where the doors were, but no sidewalks that went completely around the elementary buildings, and Mr. Miller, in the wintertime, and the staff would have to keep all the emergency exits plowed, and it just wasn't always, you know, the best situation, so we addressed that safety issue with new sidewalks. And this is a picture of the windows at the high school, and on the left, you can see, those are probably still district office windows, the old ones with the panels on top, and on the right, all brand-new windows with the new glass, and it really gives the front of the building and the entire building a nice look and much more energy-efficient. All of our fire alarm systems, at least I think at the elementary level, were addressed. Before, you see the older system on the left, when there was a smokehead that went off, the system didn't identify where that was. The custodians used to have to walk around and find out which smokehead was an alarm. Now, you have addressable systems in all of our buildings, so now they can go to a panel, tells them exactly where the problem is, and they can get to it much faster and assess what the issue is. Any questions on any of the pictures?
What's the holdup on the glass? For the high school, as a first thing?
We had some unforeseen conditions when we were measuring the frames, and we started working out the main office, and we discussed this. So, once the frames were configured and installed, we had a (inaudible) and a separate frame installed, and that glass should appear in the next week or so. Discussion of panels for the balance of the (inaudible).
So, now, we'd like to go over a financial update for you, and we have a hard copy for each of the board members. Actually, I'm going to turn this part over to Jim to explain what you're looking at there.
Is there a pointer?
Yeah. Actually, the mouse works as a pointer, just don't click anything.
Okay. Good, I don't need my glasses for this screen. This is a summary sheet that I use for tracking, more of a macro level, but you'll see, as far as contractors, these are our prime contractors that were awarded low bid. General Trades Contractor, HVAC, plumbing, electric, roofing, and then our Kitchen Supply Company. These are the base bids that were accepted at bid time. These were the field order allowances that were included in the bids. And then, if you remember, it's been a couple of years now, but the accepted alternates at the time, we accepted. Gives us a total contract value for each prime contractor, totally in the $11,706,900. And these columns here are just summaries of how we track allowances and change orders. We have pending allowances, which are made up of numerous items that we've found throughout the project for unforeseen conditions by each prime contractor, and that goes against their field order allowance that's assigned at bid time. The pending are actually in review now with La Chaise and with the architect, and then they go through a four-signature process of, I'll sign them, I'll send them to the contractor, the architect then signs them, and then they go to Greg for signatures before they're authorized for billing. The change order is a very similar process. We have pending and approved change order, pending change orders, and then approved change orders. It's the same process. We'll get the change orders in for review. If they're large numbers, I usually send them to our estimating department at La Chaise. I think everybody's aware, we have a, our estimating department's made up of 13 professionals that will review the numbers just for conformity, making sure that we're getting the best value. They go to Clark Patterson for review, and then, once the signatures are complete, they come to you for review and signature, similar to the ones that you'll have on your, on the board packet tonight. And you'll see the adjusted contract value is adjusted only by approved change orders. Again, the allowances are included in the base bid of the contract. Again, the allowances are included in the base bid of the contract. This column here just shows really what we've been requisitioned to date, what we've paid out to date to all of the contractors. Here, we're about 81% paid out because we haven't received our August billing yet. And that'll go up significantly because we're almost at 100%. We're at punch list phase right now. And then you'll see the balance to finish. So this is kind of where we are financially. Down here, you'll see in the recap sheet, this is interesting. Our total allowance is of $600,000. So far, we've had approved allowances of 283-plus. We have pending allowances, and this is the balance of allowances. The amount that we don't use, as far as allowance balance by contract, we will write a change order to get that money back. We'll recover those funds for any unused portion of field order allowances. In the construction contingency, we've carried a little over 5% since bid, $588,000. That was a number we felt comfortable with. Approved change orders, we have pending change orders, which includes a lot, what's on your table tonight. And then we have our contingency and our balance of about $100,000. And if you look at the recap, our referendum total, minus base bids, alternates, and our contingency, incidental budget, which is all of our soft costs. And we still have our uncommitted balance of 640. And that's what we would use to recommend to use for the future district office renovations.
Are there any questions for Jim?
Yep. Thank you very much. At this time, board, have any questions, please? Feel
That includes the architectural fees, the construction management fees, and includes all legal costs, surveys, asbestos monitoring, for example, third-party testing, for example, our concrete testing, our asbestos testing from Envoy Environmental. It'll include any kind of printing, advertising costs, any kind of utilities that we might use during the project that we identify. It's a whole summary sheet that we set up at the beginning of the project and we monitor. We also have about a little bit of a contingency in that, if there's anything unforeseen. But Greg and I monitor that each month and making sure that those costs also fall within budget. And so far, we're in good. We're in no jeopardy of exceeding that budget number.
Yes, all the things, yeah, all the things that we covered on the tour and then things that we find that we didn't see on the tour. I mean, I'm finding things every day. So we're, we have a list that we're compiling. And every time I get, I have my staff emailing me things that they see. And then I email them to Jim and Jim makes sure they get taken care of.
Yeah, we're right before, the kitchens have been punched out by our consultant. So we have an official punch list for kitchens. The architect will be punching everything out starting next week. Until that time, between Bob and I and his staff, we've created what I called a warranty maintenance log. So as I get in a complaint or an issue, I basically assign a work order number, almost as if it was maintenance. And I issue that to the contractors so we can identify and fix these problems immediately. If there's a light bulb or something not working, or there's an alarm ringing that shouldn't be ringing. So we can identify and get these things repaired quickly. By the way, Bill Littier is on the way. And, but it's worked out very well. The contractors have been responsive. We do have a second shift working now, completing the balance of the work. And also, the day shift, we're areas that we can accommodate without disrupting the students and staff.
When do you think we'll find a small, these taxes that are coming in, these, you know, this and that? When do you anticipate that one? Is that a two-week project? Is it a two-month project?
I hope never, but reality, it's going to be months. As we move in and use things, you'll find things. And as the dish, as the kitchen's being utilized, we may find a hose leaking a little bit. So we're right on those. Again, the contractors are obligated for one-year warranty. And LaChase, obviously, we're here to the end and we will, we will take care of all of these items as they come up.
When are they working on the office in OE's second shift or are they there?
No, we've been able to work quietly during the day there. The windows did come in today, the wood windows with the glass, the countertops are in. We'll be working the weekend putting that office back together again.
So what you should be thinking about, Ron, is we're going to?
Yeah, the thing that we balance will be the windows are all hand-milled oak, windows and trim. It's actually beautiful. We have to come back on a weekend to get that all stained to hopefully, to match the pre-existing woodwork in Ontario Elementary.
The biggest change order that we're going to approve tonight deals with the parking lot at the middle school. Had you waited until the board approved that, how long would that have delayed the parking lot over there?
I don't think it would have been done this year, Ron. I think because of Ruston Paving, who's a subcontractor to Welliver, with the amount of work that we had just slated this summer, the large change orders, even though they're unfortunate, and I agree they're untimely, and I apologize for that, it was something we had to make quickly because of the way the paving plans and the workload that Ruston had at the time. They would have had to go on to another project. And to get them back timely, to get this completed before school would have been impossible, and let alone plants closing at the end of November, there would have been a risk. Also, a quality improvement thing, too. I think anybody in construction, and I'm sure Matt knows, I mean, I don't want cold asphalt, I don't want that cold joint to be too long. I'm no expert, but I think what we did was right for the district. And I think quality-wise, it achieved what we wanted to do.
Okay. The other question I had, Jim, is when a change order comes in and you send it to your people for review, how long does that process take?
It takes, I give them a couple of days, depending on their workload, Ron, and depending on the size of the change order. For example, the asphalt change order that I sent for review, we have a site department, civil department, that's, we actually do site work ourselves, LaChase, we self-perform that. So estimators would look at that. They'd look at the unit costs for the asphalt, they'd look at the labor, they'd look at the materials. And also, there was some escalation due to the index, the asphalt index that changes every year. They'll give me that information back that I send to the architect, that we actually did our due diligence. Architect will review, and they have their own system of reviewing internally also. And, you know, before we bring it to you, we want to make sure we've done our homework. All in all, that takes probably three weeks. By the time I review it, I sign it, get all the paperwork together, I have to send it to the architect. He takes his time to review it and then it gets back to me. So it's quite a process, unfortunately.
My question is more of, as we have hundreds of eyes in the building's employees, is there a formal method for them to report deficiencies that they see in some way of tracking and keeping track of all of this so that it's all addressed?
I've asked the staff if they do see something to report it to me in an email form. That way, I have it in writing. And then I do pass it off to Jim. We do keep a master list.
All right.
If you're asking for a formal for all the staff, I've asked the custodians to make sure that they talk to the teachers and the teachers would be able to report anything that they see. And we've got several classrooms that we don't have PA speakers working in. They put the word out, if you're not hearing it, let me know. So we got a list of rooms that, you know, we have issues with the PA and that's how we keep track of it.
Yeah, I just, my wife comes home and tells me about stuff. And I know she has a clear communication with her supervisor for that kind of stuff. But I didn't know if everybody had that same opportunity or if they knew what to do.
Yeah, that and me walking through the hallway.
Bob, actually, Mr. Miler brought up a really good point. The, I take it from our tour, that the $17,000 has to do with the lights over here? Yes, okay. And what is the procedure, Greg? Because he did raise a good point and it kind of popped into my head. How do we make sure that those funds do get returned to us?
Well, Jim is in charge of, with Bob and I, in managing all that. And, you know, I think it's a valid point to ask if we're, have a change order for the additional work that had to be done, why isn't the credit backcharging the general contractor there? One of the things, that paperwork is in process, but we felt that Welliver, since it's a credit change order, it's a deduct, we didn't think it's fair to hold up payment to the electricians who responded in timely fashion until we had the paperwork signed from Welliver. So that's one of the factors. I mean, you know, that's part of our overall project management. I mean, we would not let a big credit like that, you know, fall through the cracks. It just, it'd be inexcusable. I mean, those funds are near and dear to us. So, you know, I mean, it's a, it's a good question, but we felt that, like I said, it's not fair to hold up the payment to the electrician who's done the work because the contractors are not always as eager to sign the credit change orders as they are the ones that add to their contract total. Other questions for Jim or Bob and I on the financial part?
So that, we still have that whoever is going to owe us that money still working. So they're still expecting money. So we do have a way to hold them accountable by not paying them something else in the future if they haven't given us the credit.
Right. The way the project works with payment applications for contractors is they record a value of how much work has been done as part of their contract total. And then, the district holds 5% of that back as retainage. So they have not billed us 100%, plus, we still have the 5% retainage. And Welliver's contract is, what, about $6 million?
Yeah, right now, we're holding balance plus retainage, a little over $1 million.
A little over $1 million, so.
And just to give you a little history on that, and it is a valid point, when we had discovered the issue during abatement, when they accidentally threw out the lights that were supposed to have been saved, you know, our job is to put Welliver on notice, give them a letter on notice, listen, you made an error, you're responsible, please respond, replace the light fixtures. And again, we have a good prime contractor relationship. They responded. Obviously, it's easier, quicker for Bill Littier to do this work. We would hire Bill Littier anyway. This was all predetermined before we even processed the change order. And it's all documented. So I don't think there's risk here. And like you said, Tim, we are holding. But again, we still have to cross our Ts and dot our Is legally. Because if we don't do that, we follow up, then obviously, there could be issues. And that's not the case here.
Are there any other questions for these gentlemen?
So the next item on the agenda is the approval of the change orders that you have in your packet. And I'd just like to start out by saying that with any project, we have a system for how we manage a project. And one of the things that we do before the project starts is we ask the board to approve what we call a change order threshold. So probably none of the current board was on, were board members at that time. But prior to the start of this project, we came to the board at that time and recommended a $20,000 change order threshold valued, value. All change orders need to be approved by the board. But what the threshold piece does is it allows the superintendent and the district to make decisions up to $20,000 without formal board approval. You know, the smaller ones are the ones that are usually timely, that the contract is right there, you want to get it done, you know, something comes up that you didn't anticipate. Usually, the larger ones, there's a lot more planning involved and the work doesn't happen quite as quickly. So you have time to bring it to the board. So we do have that threshold piece in place and it's set at 20,000. Now, there are four tonight that we're asking you to approve that exceed that amount. And, but I'd just like to talk a little bit about those four. The first one was the asbestos that was discovered during the project above the high school office, above the guidance office, and in the entire district office. That was an unforeseen condition. And that work had to be done immediately, otherwise, school wouldn't have been open on time because the office wouldn't have been ready. The high school got all brand-new windows. The caulk with the old windows had PCBs in the caulk, so we knew there had to be abatement of that. But they actually had to do and abate that whole area. So that was, that was a time issue. I mean, it had to be done then. We didn't have time to come to the board and seek that approval. I mean, I'd almost say it's a no-brainer. I mean, that work had to be done to keep the project going. The second one that was referred to tonight about the paving, initially, when we had, we were putting the project together, we were over budget. So we looked at areas of how we could cut back on costs. So the original paving plan for the front of the middle school had the looping repaved up to the north door. And it didn't include the north entrance. The plan did include, I believe, the widening of the bus loop. When they started to dig that out to widen the bus loop so that the buses don't have to double stack, now they can all go in nose-first. And so we widened the bus loop and extended the sidewalk, there was a difference in the grade of
About three feet.
About three feet from one side to the other. So when that was discovered, Bob called Fred and I, we went over there, we all looked at it. And that was a safety issue. There was no way we could leave that grade like that with the buses pointing in like that. Anytime it's slippery or wet, it was going to be an issue. And the fact that the project was in good shape financially, it didn't make sense to stop the paving and not do the north entrance. That was a decision that was made budgetarily early on. And, you know, the timing of that decision occurred when the paving contractor was right there. As Jim stated, there was a lot of other work they had to do with other jobs. And as soon as we knew that issue occurred, we did, at the last board meeting, give the board a verbal heads-up that this was coming. So.
Nick, can I jump in there in there?
Yes.
I was just whispering to John here, saying, this isn't news to us. Even though this is the change order just getting to us, in fact, say, look, the asbestos, we knew this was coming.
Right.
We've had discussions. This isn't the first we've heard of this. The board has known that there was the grade issue. And this is not news. This isn't the first time we've said, holy cow, what are you doing? I'd just like to point that out, guys. We're just getting around the habits officially.
Right. And, you know, my cover memo for the paving might be slightly misleading because it was additional work that the district requested, but it was a safety issue as well. So that's what drove the timing of that. Then there's another, another change order for the electricians, that's over $20,000. When the windows were removed at OP, we knew there was asbestos in the caulk, but there was a second bead of caulk behind the windows that nobody knew existed. So we had to have additional abatement work done before that window replacement could take place. So once again, that was a time-sensitive issue that had to occur right then and there. We wouldn't have gotten the windows replaced. And then the last one is the cubbies at Freewill. The cubbies, you know, there was data and power with the old cubbies. What wasn't shown on the drawings was when the new cubbies were installed, that there would, they would be in conflict with the existing power and wire management that's there. You know, whether that is an issue because the as-built drawings weren't updated, you know, you could say that the architect could have done more field work. The risk of doing the field work ahead of time is you're doing a lot of that field work before your project approval. If the project doesn't get approved, then those costs are, you have to absorb those in the general fund. And there's somewhat of a balance of how much field work you want, you know, how much resource you want to put into the field work. But once we discovered the condition for those cubbies to be installed properly, all that wire mold had to be moved and relocated so that those rooms could, you know. So once again, I would, I would say that that one was time-sensitive. So I understand the questions that were posed tonight, but I mean, we, we do our best to keep you informed. And, you know, we only exceed the threshold when, when it's absolutely necessary. So, and I'd be happy to talk about any of the other change orders if you have any questions. But, you know, I just wanted to give you the threshold piece and some of the background because I think it might help answer some of the questions that the community raised, which were valid questions.
Couple of thoughts on what you just stated. I think it's possible, I mean, there's one way around it to make sure we approve them in a timely manner, is to, we can have special board meetings just to approve these things. Or is there a way to do a approval of the work to be done and then approve the work orders later? That's just a thought. Is there a way to do that in a policy? Is it a policy change?
You know, Tim, I guess I would say, although those aren't bad ideas, unless we take, as a board as a whole, unless we take great perception of what is being presented to us in the reasoning, then I would say, yeah, we might want to look deeper into how we might tighten the reins and tighten the control now. But I think we've gotten pretty good answers. First of all, the questions that were raised were good questions. We've even had some, you know, we've had some board members ask questions about these, union members ask questions about these. Those were all valid questions. But I feel that we've gotten good answers. That doesn't mean- That doesn't mean that all nine of you think that, but I feel like I've gotten some good answers, and I'm happy with it. So I don't feel that we need to change anything. It's not a bad idea, but I would just throw out that says, hey, if all nine of us are happy with the answers we got, then let's let them do what they're doing. Except for, thanks.
And just moving forward with change orders, you're all, the board's very aware of the, some of the issues we had with the concession stand. So those issues are not all totally resolved. Our focus was to get that building, the issues corrected, and open on time so that for our sporting events, it would be ready and the community could enjoy it. We were able to do that. Now will come the difficult task of sorting out who has what responsibility. Through that process, there could be some change orders that will exceed the $20,000, be they both credit-back charges or charges to, like, say, the plumbing contractor who really didn't have any issues with his work, but had to uninstall and then reinstall everything that they had done, and same with the electricians. So in resolving that issue moving forward, I don't know how that's going to shake out, but there is that possibility that that will be the case.
And that was a conscious decision of the board to ask you and Bob to go ahead and get that thing done, and that we would sort out the responsibility and the blame and the costs afterwards. So I think the board's well aware of that, that you were instructed to do, to take that path, so.
As long as we're talking about the concession stand, my question is, do you know offhand if there's signage planned for it, such as where the restrooms, this is the concession stand? Because I was there Friday night, and the biggest question I was asked, "Where are the restrooms?" "Oh, they're hiding around the other end of the building." So I didn't know if there was anything planned or not.
Yeah, there should be signage donating where the restrooms are, be it male or, for men or women. As far as on the front of it, previously, we had done, I believe, Amy, we had done a contest where I believe the high school students submitted artwork, and then something was chosen for, I don't want to say a mural, but what's the right term? For signage for the concession stands. It's still artwork, correct?
And then the only other comment is, also, they didn't know where the exterior light switch was.
Yeah, that one?
Yeah. I talked with the electrical contractor about that, and what I think ended up happening is he had the photocell pointed kind of towards the lights, so I think when we turned the lights on the field, it turned the lights off on the concession stand. So I asked him to take that photocell out and just use the switch.
Kept the bugs down, though.
Yeah?
It's extra.
Are there any other questions for Greg or Bob at this point? If not, we do need a motion to approve the change orders. Can I get a motion to that effect? Phil, second. Jeremy? Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask Joe to come up and talk to us a little bit of a
...percent of our students across grades three through eight who scored a two, three, or four. We haven't typically reported out the two, three, or four mark, but given the context of what I just said in the earlier slide, I thought maybe I would. That translates into students in the four levels across the district. You see, our biggest level, our, most of our students reside in Level Two. Our goal is to get all students, every student, over time to Levels Three and Four, but it would make sense that if Level Two represents the previous standard, the standard that we had been working toward and doing quite well in this district, and that many of our students would find themselves there early on in the adoption of the Common Core State standards. Now, for these kids, I'll speak to this slide, and then when we go to the math, I won't speak to it as much, but for this slide, this tells us who our students are who require academic intervention services. New York State says that every student at a Level One requires academic intervention service. Students at Level Two who fall below a certain threshold at Level Two will require academic intervention services. And so for us, we're going to monitor all of our twos, but we're going to provide direct academic intervention services to all kids, all of our students that were required to do so by statute. In Freewill and Ontario Elementary and the Middle School, we've got designated periods for kids to work on their academics. The data that's coming from the state is much more usable, it's much more prescriptive. We can tell, we can group kids by standards using that information, we can see where student strengths were. Right now, the data is where it belongs, it's in the hands of the teachers as they look at their class list and think about how they can best meet their students' needs. So, you could go ahead. Did it move? So, you know, I always like to stress that while we're not in competition with area districts, when we have new standards and proficiency rates in the high 30s and low 40s, it can help us to see if we're keeping pace with area districts, and help us know which districts to turn to. But in truth, we're collaborating more with our area school districts than we ever have before. We have a lot of common workshops that we attend, we have some, we're always on the phone discussing whether it's the Common Core State Standards, the assessments, or the APPR, lots of listservs going around. So there's a lot of collaboration. However, we fare quite well in Wayne County. This is in line with the socioeconomic status. We enjoy the lowest poverty rate, and we enjoy that, the highest proficiency rates. But we do believe in this district that instruction matters. So while poverty indexes can explain where you are, it's no excuse to be there. So we're going to continue to try to push our numbers up and get all our kids to threes and fours. When you look at the Wayne Go ahead.
The collaboration you spoke about, is that at an administrative level, staff, maybe departmental head level, or yes?
I would say we have more collaboration between teachers than we've had in the past, certainly more between administrators, as we go to, as we've gone to Albany and had those shared experiences. We had our network team in place. It's kind of outlived its usefulness, but during the early implementation, we were working very closely with Williamson, Marion, Newark, and Gananda, for example. So we had shared learning opportunities for all those five districts to come together as administrators, yeah.
Just a question on this. We collaboratively work with mostly Wayne Finger Lake schools or mostly Wayne County schools, yet we're above them, and I know we strive to be like more some of the Monroe County schools. Is there a way that we can collaborate with them also in order to, you know, use their, pick their brains a little bit to see what they're doing that could help us? Because right now, we're on the top, working with the other ones, maybe that might not help us as much as kind of moving into that.
Well, being on the top with a 30, or 38% proficiency rate, I would say we all have a lot of work to do.
Correct.
So, but certainly, we could look to collaborate more with our friends to the west as well.
How do we compare with them?
Well, why don't we continue on?
You have that slide, yeah.
So in the Wayne Finger Lake Sposies, in our 25 area districts, we find ourselves close to the top and well above, well above average. And then, John, when we take a look in Monroe County, we find ourselves in the middle, you know, about, I think, you know, in 10th. So, you know, you have some schools that are really hitting their mark. We would have never, three years ago, said 61% was, wow, what are they doing? But, you know, the rigor's up there, the standards are different, and we're all adjusting. So even our, even our most, our highest-performing districts are, you know, they have a lot of work to do as well.
And that includes the city of Rochester, right?
It does not include the city of Rochester.
Oh, it does not include the city, okay.
I got a little feedback last year about including Rochester, so I decided not to.
Okay. And that's about where we would fall in the SES scale as well, isn't it?
It's about, it's about where we would fall. When you look at business first rankings, you can see a lot of those Monroe schools are, you know, the Brightens, the Pittsords, the Penfields, Webster's ahead of us, Victor's ahead of us, well, Victor's a Wayne Finger Lake school, but yeah, it's about where, it's right in there, yes.
Yeah, without identifying the school on your last slide you just did, but go ahead. The one before.
Yes, I did. Unintentionally. Okay, so, go ahead, John. This next chart shows how we did at each grade level. These are our proficiency rates against the state's proficiency rates. So it's different kids, but the same grade level. So in third grade, in 2013, we had a 35% proficiency rate. This year, we had a 35% proficiency rate. When we look at within a given school year, we're thinking in terms of our ability to adjust to different kids in front of us, and what does that look like? Over time, we expect to be able to adjust quite well. So you can see in fourth grade, we spike up. In fifth grade, there's a little bit of a dip, and so on. When you get to the middle school, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, all dip, with the biggest dip coming in seventh grade. Those are different kids, but within the year. And you can see, we somewhat follow the New York State pattern, although there's some bigger dips than New York State. We're always ahead of the average in New York State. So that's a little glimpse into grade level. But we also like to look at how a cohort does. So in this, in this chart, you're going to see how kids did from one year to another. Same kids, different year. And this is a little, a little bit of a friendlier graph in terms of, in terms of our results. So from third to fourth grade, our kids went from a 35% to a 40% proficiency rate. Now, it's not exactly the same. We have move-ins, we have move-outs, we have kids who participated in 2013, who, for whatever reason, did not participate in 2014. Our opt-outs kind of make interpretation at this global level difficult, but remember what I said on the earlier slide. The important thing is that the classroom teachers who have these kids in front of them every day have their data and know how they did, and they're planning interventions to help them. So still have that sixth to seventh, a little bit of a dip from sixth to seventh, and for the most part, it's
Why do you think so?
They are looking at that. We, one of the things that we had last year that we didn't have the year before were opt-outs, so I alluded to that. And so where you would expect 100% participation in the assessments, if a kid comes to school, they're taking the assessment, maybe you have a couple of absences, and you catch them at the makeup period, and maybe at the end of the day, you have a few kids who didn't make either the makeup or the initial exam. We saw more opt-outs at the middle school level, and it's possible, and when I spoke to Mrs. Tatro, she said, "Remember, tell them." A lot of those opt-outs were high-performing kids. They weren't the kids who were struggling necessarily. I'm not going to say that no struggling students opted out of the test, but her reflection last year was, we're losing some of our higher, higher kids in this assessment, which the good news on that is we have other data to use as well, so.
Another thing, it could also be, when you take a look at both, I mean, you take a look at the dips in both those areas, in the whole board, it also could be an indication that the assessment needs to be looked at, and I think that's one of the toughest things that we have transitional difficulty with. I think that's something that the state would take a look at. And you take a look and see how we did early, pretty well in terms of growth, and we start to dip at sixth to seventh, or seven to eight, there could be more than just, it could be more than just our issue.
I think it could be social.
That's the tough part, you know, and you're only talking to a couple of students that can really swing these things on the agenda table. So we use a lot of opt-outs that our kids might perform well, that could have dramatic impact on that number as well. So no problem with, you know, testing and data all around.
Two kids, we were looking at some of our opt-out rates. I kept a close tally of our opt-out rates. I think math had more opt-outs than ELA, but we had anywhere from 4% to 6% at a grade level opting out, which would be, you know, between, you know, five, six to eight kids. It doesn't take a lot to impact it.
There are districts outstate that, from the district perspective, are encouraging and not doing, because of their concern about the, you know, the, obviously, we're not there, we just wanted to share that with you.
We're not doing that.
... together, and urging the community not to opt out. Again, I think, you take a look at where we are in these tests compared to Wayne County and compared to the state, I think, again, it's always worked the growth, it was a process, and all of being late, we were, and we'll continue to do that, but I think, there's these, we have to, we don't want to rest on this world, so.
So next year's juniors will be the first group required to take and pass the Common Core English Regents exam. Historically, I think you see this graph shows not only a high passing rate, one of the targets that we had set and have historically held to is we like to see 1/3 of our kids at mastery at least. So we like to see that 33%. And in English Language Arts, our teachers truly have hit the mark over the last, this goes back to 2007, so we've done quite well. We feel good about where we are with ELA. Our English 10 teachers now are implementing the new Common Core curriculum, and they'll be attending some trainings in Newark later next month, so we'll keep our eye on that one. And we'll shift our attention to math. You see a similar result. I think we're up 1% overall from last year, from 44 to 44. I think we're up 1% overall from last year, from 44 to 45. Across the state, there was mild growth in ELA. When I say mild growth, about a 10th of a percent growth overall in ELA. In math, it was a little bit more, I don't think it was 3% or 4% overall growth. So a much more significant jump in, in math, and we saw just a slight jump in ours. So for us, that translates into students in ones, twos, threes, and fours, which is, of course, is what we're mostly interested in. Where do the kids fall, and what do they need to get to that next level? And as I spoke to ELA, the same thing applies to how we intervene in math.
Again, just to remind you, Board, Level 2, you definitely have some numbers there, but there's work to be done there. But that's where our teaching is geared to for the last five years or so. So as we shift that, those methodologies, you know, to the Common Core, that goal is to shift, obviously, 2 and 3, 4. So again, there's work to be done, but, you know, it's a shift in how we're presenting that instruction, and, you know, and that's, I don't, you know, people realize that, if we were using our old standards, we would be in great shape. But it's the shift across the board, and they continue to go through the transition, but, but again, I think we're doing well. That's our target right there. What we do know, what it tells me is what we do know, is that when we get an understanding of what they want us to teach, we do really well. And that's where we are now, getting that understanding, that shift of curriculum. And, and again, that's our work.
So for our reference points across the county, you're going to see similar to ELA. We lead, we lead Wayne County. We're at the top of the pack in our Wayne Finger Lakes region and far exceeding the average, I think. And then in the Monroe area, we, we're at about 11, tied, tied for, tied for 10th in the Monroe. And so very similar, ELA and math. What I would say about the previous standards is that we all but, we all but eliminated the ones on our previous assessments. We had almost, we had so few ones under the old assessments, so as John said, you know, our focus is going to be to get those students up to, up to twos and threes in, in short Similar to the other slide, you can see in third grade, for example, the first admittance found us at a 42% proficiency, and we, we jumped up to a 54%. Similar climbs in fourth, fifth, fourth and fifth, slight, slight dip in sixth and seventh, and a significant dip in eighth. And with that eighth grade stat, I need to tell you about that eighth grade status, a couple of things. One is, it was the first time that students who were taking a high school level math course did not need to take the Math 8 exam. Previous years found all students in eighth grade taking both the Math 8 and the high school level algebra exam. So they, they eliminated that requirement, and students could opt to take the Math 8. We opted not to ask them to take the Math 8. We didn't see the point in asking them to double test. However, we, we did allow them, our accelerated kids, to take both the Common Core and the New York, the old New York State Regents, and I'll speak to that in a minute. So a significant dip. If you, if you put those students in, about 70 students back into the mix, they all passed the Common Core Algebra exam. It's safe to assume they would have passed the Math 8 exam, and that would have, you would have seen about a 10% jump in eighth grade. But we don't give kids tests so that our statistics look better.
And that can be defensive of the data. There's work to be done. Use the data to provide an instruction areas that we see. I agree. We, we see things that we have to work on, character studies, some of the nuances that help, you know, shift in common course, and that's, I don't know, I'm going to think we have to, we have to do it possibly. We see it, we're going to, our work this year, they said we want to be better today than they yesterday, so we're going to debate and use this data, apply that instruction. I'll let you see what's going to happen. Part of what we do is really forward the instruction, probably the application about our structure, and all our restructure in a way to make sure that our staff understands the data, we're giving the right information to their hands, so that they can continually better judge. Is that how we're going to, it's challenging and looking forward to it.
So this year, last year's students had the option, the state gave them the option of, they had to take the Common Core-based Algebra exam, and it was up to them, would they like to take the old Regents exam? And we, as a district, were permitted to count the higher of their two scores. So most of the kids who elected to, to take the Regents exam were our accelerated kids in middle school. We had a small number of kids at the high school elect to take both, but most of the kids, 67 of the 78 accelerated middle school kids took both exams, which, that is that population. They, they would decide to do that. And we had an 85% passing rate on that exam and a 14% mastery. Some of that statistic is also kids who had struggled in algebra, are not freshmen, and are trying to get through that exam for a second time and still struggling a little bit with it. So, so, so this one has some struggling math students, very few ninth graders, and a lot of accelerated eighth graders. The Common Core result is similar with the, with the glaring difference in the mastery rate. So 12% fewer, fewer kids at the mastery rate. Something we really want to look at. I've spoken to our algebra teachers, they've reflected on some, you know, I had an algebra conversation with Brian Grayson, one of our algebra teachers, and he said, you know, this year, I, I think I have a better approach. I'm not, if it doesn't make sense to me, I'm not going to teach it that way, I'm going to teach it this way. And he actually has moved up and is now taking that approach to geometry, which will be the next Common Core-based math assessment required of students. Class 2017 gets to march right up with the new assessments, and so Brian will be out there, hopefully applying what he learned in algebra to geometry. He's taught geometry for years as well as a ninth grade teacher, so it's not that the curriculum's completely new to him. That's where we are with that. You know, we, our goal is not college or career-ready, our goal is college and career-ready. We want to make sure that our kids have as many doors open to them as possible. And so whether a student is interested in the trades, or whether they're interested in being a philosopher, we know that kids who can read well, who can express themselves in writing, and who can do math, have a lot of doors open to them. So we embrace the higher, the higher standards, we embrace the challenge. I think one of the things that the Common Core standards have done is they've, they've raised the roof a little bit. Had a conversation this summer with some of our kindergarten teachers, and we're talking about some of the vocabulary, the incredible vocabulary that those kindergarten kids were doing. And the conversation was around, you know, these kids can't get all these words. This is, I don't think this is attainable. And when you go into the document, the target isn't that kids can get all those words or use all those words. It's, it might be that they get six out of the 10 words, and that is the expected level. So when you don't test only to the expected level, you raise the roof for those kids who actually can get some of that higher level vocabulary. And the kids have embraced it, and I think, you know, our primary teachers have seen wonderful results, and they actually, much of the curriculum, they do enjoy. So it's just an example of kind of a positive. A lot of the jobs that our kids will be, a lot of the jobs that are being created now are requiring those upper-level degrees. So having kids who can, can enter college without needing remediation will, will help to ensure that they can not only gain access to college, but get a degree and pursue, pursue a career. We know that some of the data around, around jobs, job attainment, job lessness, and, and income are directly correlated to the degree. So students who, the higher your education, you can see the red line on the left from the top, it's that 2.4% unemployment for somebody with a doctorate compared to 14.1 for somebody who didn't attain a college degree. So much more, the higher your education, the less, the less unemployment, and the greater the potential income. That is not lock, lock, stop, and we need to help students pick well, pick a career or pursue something that is in their field of interest, but also perhaps that has some demand. So it's not just go get a college degree, but let's guide them toward those science, math, and technology degrees that are, that have high employment rates in the field, so. And finally, businesses agree with the higher standards because they bear the burden of educating students who aren't up to their standard. So, and this is just a quote from, from one CEO. As John said, he took my, he took my, my line, our work is cut out for us. We're at the bottom of another mountain. But I know, as was true when the standards were first initiated a decade ago, that these new standards too, we will, we will, we will meet this challenge, you know? How are we going to do that? As I said on opening day, we've taken a learn, apply, and adapt mentality. We know there's, you know, initially, we were talking about just decoding this, how are the standards organized, and what do they mean, and crosswalking the standards against our, against our, the old standards and the new standards, and where are they different? We've come a long way, our, our teachers have come a long way from that to actually applying the standards in their room. And the work this summer that was done, as beautiful as the bricks and mortar are, I'm going to tell you, I think some of the equally important work was done with our staff as they did, wrote curriculum, rewrote assessments. They, they, we had 60, I want to say 69 at the end of the day, different projects going on. Everything from, what are we going to, how are we going to plan for our academic intervention students? Those ones and twos on those graphs that you saw, significant numbers of kids who need remediation, to what are we going to do with our, how are we approaching acceleration in math at the seventh grade? Should we consider sixth grade? How do we condense that curriculum? So to how do we adapt these modules to better meet our kids and pace these modules so we not, not only get through them, but we get through them with the kids, understanding what they need to understand. So our work is cut out for us, for sure. As John said, I'm going to, I'm going to share with you some of our achievements. We have a lot of work to do, but we also have a lot to be proud of. Beginning with our Business First rankings, you'll see four schools up there, but what you should know is that all five schools are recognized. OE doesn't succeed without OP. And so regularly, over the last several years, we have, we have seen good rankings from Business First. I'm going to kind of go through these a little bit quickly. If you were at graduation this year, or if you, if you've ever had the occasion to come to undergraduate awards, you know that our kids earn hundreds and hundreds of scholarships. That's a testament to our community's support of our kids, but it's also a testament to the work ethic that our, that our, that our students have and the academic success that they have enjoyed. This next slide shows a student who earned a fellowship, SUNY's Big Data Project. Having a student have, pursue it is impressive. Having them get it speaks to, kind of speaks to the foundation. So I think that must be a confident kid who has a great foundation provided to, to them from Wayne Central. This next slide shows two more examples of both character and scholarship from our elementary and middle school. Earlier, you heard about Tyler, Greg, and Cameron and their All-State accomplishments and some of the competitions that they're, that they're going to. We have a lot of talented students in the area of the fine arts. We know that those students require great staff, and I, and we have some of the most talented staff in the area, but they also require the right environment. And this award, the National Association, being recognized as a best community for, for music education is a, is a great accomplishment for us. Me and John got to get on the same page. This next slide, I think, yeah, the All County. As a parent of students who participate in, in music and instrumental music and having attended these, we always have a disproportionately large number of kids participating in, in the All County events. Athletics, as you know, we have a whole evening dedicated to celebrating our athletics. Too many accomplishments to, to really do them justice today. The one thing that I would say is, as impressive as our kids have been on the field, they're, they're impressive off the field. Community service is a part of our athletic program. The spirit of community service starts at the elementary level, Free Will and OP, and carries up through the middle and high school levels. And as a result, we have seen some really impressive outreaches, both within our, within our school community and, and even wider with Bald for Bucks and all the other local and national things that we have participated in. One thing that we did do on opening day is recognize Mr. Poehn in the high school. They were recognized as a reward school, and you get recognized as a reward school for having consistently high achievement rates with few gaps in performance by subgroup. And so the high school has a lot to be proud of with that accomplishment, and, you know, one of the things that I mentioned on opening day that I'll say again here, and, and something that, that Mr. Poehn and I both recognize, is that that's built on the foundation at the primary, elementary, and middle school levels. It doesn't happen without hard work at the high school and trying to make sure every kid reaches their full potential, but it, it begins with that foundation. So we're quite proud of that. With that, I'll take any questions.
A couple quick, before we go to questions. The, the slide on scholarships, students taking AP courses, advanced courses, it's tremendous because it relates to real savings for our parents and those who live in the county. The scholarships impact tuition, and in many cases, I talked, we've been talking to a couple of our parents, I think we've seen some letters, or we've had some touchdowns on these, of kids who've ended the college as a first semester sophomore or a second semester freshman based on the credits they had there. That equates to some real savings as well, which I think is great. And the other thing is, if you take a look at the facilities project that we are coming to conclusion on, and the type of work and energy that went in that project, and kind of draw a parallel between that to shifting to the Common Core over the last couple of years, that's a type of intensity in work that's been going on to get teachers prepared for that. Joe alluded to huge numbers of teachers now modifying modules that we've had. And I just want to publicly thank Joe because that's kind of, Joe's kind of like the duck on top of the water, moving along muscles, moving along muscles, but his feet are going like about 90 miles an hour underneath there, pulling together the committees, the teacher work, and oftentimes with some controversy because the state has given us some direction. Teachers are feeling their independent, their academic freedom being imposed upon a little bit. Some degree, they may be right, but yet we have to come up with a plan to help keep us there. And I can tell you this, there is minimal implementation dip that you guys have experienced, and I think, you know, that has a lot to do with how we got everyone to Common Core. It was not, it's not an easy task. It wasn't an easy task. There's a lot of opinions on it, and, and I think, you know, Joe did a great job. And I can tell you, when I was at Pendleton, we were struggling with it. We had no staff. You know, assistants who were in Pendleton, three or four more directors, which is not, that's a little bit bigger than, than this. So I, I think, yeah, I'd like to thank Joe and his staff because what we saw here, like the facilities project, a lot of work and dust that went on behind the scenes the last couple of years, and again, not necessarily everybody cited about, you know, jumping in and making that change. So with that said, questions, any thoughts or questions on any of the slides you saw on the instructional program? And I think Joe alluded to, our next step is, as we move forward with the administrative improvement plans, we want to bring those principals in here to kind of share a little bit, they'll dig down a little bit more deeper in their buildings for you, take a look at what they saw, what happened last year, what they're hoping to do. hoping to do moving forward next year. We, we have those scheduled, like, I think, October, identified for October, so we're looking forward to that, uh, as well. And that, that will be kind of, you know, following up on this and keep, keep it moving. Carl?
I have one, um, question. My comment is, I think that, uh, the implementation is second. Common Core, most districts saw what we saw, that their threes, they have a certain amount that were threes that are now twos. It's not just Wayne Central, it's across the state. So, you, we all have to take and understand that. My question is, the parents, the letters went home, have there been a lot of panic? Or, I'm sure you sent a wonderful letter that said, "This is one piece, this is not who your child is, blah, blah, blah," but have you gotten feedback, parents upset, or they just kind of swallowing it and saying, "I know my kids are in good hands and things will improve"?
We are not seeing, um, parents panicking this year. I, my letter was wonderful, thank you. But, in all sincerity, I, I think, um, it was a shock last year, uh, it was a big shock. So, although we may have, at the margin, we may have had a kid slide back, had a low two become, or a low three become a high two, uh, this isn't the first, last year, we had some fours on previous state assessments, by the way, not just local become twos. That, we had some panic there, and we had a lot of good discussion there. This year, it's, it's a little bit more in stride, we see a little bit of an improvement, um, so it, so no, not the, not the pushback quite so much.
Most of the people on the board are too young to remember the other revolutions in education. Uh, they're, they're too young to remember, uh, when, uh, "A Nation at Risk" was published, and we were told that it was an act, if, the state of American education was an act of war, and they're too young, uh, most of them are probably, well, some of them are old enough to remember the Regents Action Plan, when, uh, suddenly kids had to take three years of math and three years of a foreign language, and, and, you know, and, and everybody saw the, um, the sky is falling, but, um, I have a lot of confidence that the teachers and the staff will, will, will come up to the, uh, challenge, as will the kids. And, uh, you know, I, I think, uh, we've got two years of baseline data, we'll just build on it, and if we get our incremental improvements every year, we'll be happy. Uh, you know, we just, as a board, we have to take the steps to support the people, and support the, uh, the administration, and make sure that they get the tools they need to, to prepare our kids for, for the jobs that are going to be out there. So, I, I thank you for the report tonight, and I look forward to additional, um, reports. I, probably of all the board members, I probably enjoy these more than any other board member, but, uh, I, I, I thank you for your work tonight, Joe.
Any other questions? Okay, last on superintendent for Patrick, a venture swap with an international conversation with, uh, Kathy, just to share briefly, um, uh, what that is for.
(inaudible) that all the executive, kind of, joint positions are on, uh, (inaudible).
In the arm?
Okay, thank you, Kathy.
Okay, um, back to board business.
Under board business, we do need a motion to approve a resolution to certify Wayne Central administrators as lead evaluators of teachers. Could I get such a motion? Jeremy, could I get a second? Dennis, any discussion?
I do have some discussion.
Okay.
Um, I'm going to ask, uh, that, um, that we, we remove that, that motion. We do want all of our administrator, all administrators have, have to be certified. Um, and due to the, uh, the, the quick start we have, I'm going to ask, we're going to bring this back to the board, we have a few administrators still have just a few, a few sessions left to do, um, and it's, it's not an issue or anything. I, I take responsibility, I kind of jumped the gun on it, I thought we, we had all, uh, they had all gotten through their, their work, but, um, so we'll probably bring it back either on, on the, the 25th, or a very near future board member. So, I would ask if we can remove that, um, request from the agenda right now.
Dennis, can we remove your second? You're first, okay, it's removed, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, consent agenda. Could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Carlin, could I get a second? Phil, any discussion?
It's a good, good, I'm looking, I'm looking to my guys, I, um, I know, there's a couple different ways that, that they dispose of them, and I think sometimes they're offered up, um, for purchase, or sometimes given to districts, needy districts. But I'm going to ask Greg or Joe, because I'm, I'm not familiar with the history here, but that's a typical, that's a typical, uh, process.
We've done all those things, depending on what programs are, and we out there, um, you know, like, uh, (inaudible). Last thing, we, uh, (inaudible).
I can see my reading for, uh, (inaudible). That, and, and, I think, I thought it was 2021, (inaudible). Probably the, or, (inaudible).
Well, I also got, I also got a, a reach out from, um, Walworth Library, and we're going to meet, uh, and have a conversation about used books, um, and, and possibly using them for fundraisers, so that's just another option, we're not quite there yet, but I thought it was a great idea, and setting something up to meet, uh, to meet with them, just talk over, over there.
(inaudible) question, I, I certainly don't want to reopen the whole thing, but if I remember correctly, it may have been, uh, before my time on the board, there seemed to have been some desks, or I don't know what it was, be quick, that there, and again, I'm, I'm confident, so I'm getting this wrong, it seemed like we either threw it away or donated it, I don't remember, and then there was a little bit of an outcry, that said, hey, you're supposed to put it up for bid, sell it, and then we did. I think that the second time around, we did, we actually lost money on it, if I remember correctly, so, but, it was done according to the policy rules. So, my question would be, although Dennis' question was interesting, do books fall in that same category? Or, can we donate them, or do we have to?
Um, no, I think, you know, I, I, I want to adopt a (inaudible), but I believe the policy states that you can, uh, give it back, give it back, and that's probably (inaudible).
That includes all the (inaudible). Okay, and I, I also would expect you to have that exact answer, Tom. Our first (inaudible).
I would also su- suggest, as a former principal, that when it comes down to donating books, they're well past their useful life, or the school would be hanging on to them. Do we have any other questions or discussions? If not, uh, could I get a, uh, approval? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Committee reports, uh, Jeremy, communications?
We had our first communications committee meeting this evening. We have decided we're going to have at least two roundtables. I am not going to put the date or the topic up yet, it will be announced hopefully at the next board meeting. We want to make sure we have it right before we put it out to the public. But it will be coming up soon, um, and our next meeting will be 5 o'clock, District Office, before the first October board meeting.
Thank you, Jeremy. Audit, Matt?
Uh, our first meeting will be September 18th, 5:30 PM, in the District Office Conference Room, and, uh, some of the topics, uh, we'll be, uh, setting the calendar for the rest of the year, uh, and then we'll take off, uh, picking up where we left off last year with any, uh, items that were carried over.
Thank you, Matt. Uh, policy, Phil?
Uh, yeah, I chaired today, today was our first meeting, Karen couldn't make it. We discussed, uh, the charge of the policy committee, we actually went over the structure of the policy committee, and how we typically conduct business. We also reviewed a number of topics that we plan on, uh, throughout the year discussing. There's, uh, probably no less than six to eight policies that, uh, above and beyond the normal charge that we do, we want to address. And I will only say in synopsis, um, that it looks like a couple of our top priorities are going to be addressing a policy regarding naming venues after citizens, and it looks like we may also take a good, hard look at a, a code of conduct policy to make sure that we are, um, in line with where we want to be. So, a couple, a couple thoughts from our first meeting today, and that's it.
Okay, thank you. Under Board President comments, I would just like to take this opportunity to, to thank John, and to thank, uh, all the staff for, uh, what I perceive to be an excellent opening of, of school. Um, I happen to be on the tour in the morning, touring the facilities, and, um, we were in a number of the buildings, as the teachers were coming back to the, to the buildings from the general meetings, and we, we, we received a great deal of, of positive comment about the atmosphere and the, the feeling of, uh, that, that existed in the district. And I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank John, and, and to the staff for, for that opening. Before we adjourn, we do need a short executive session to discuss, uh, negotiations. Could I get a motion to go into ex- Sure.
Um, just, I don't know if anybody here is concerned, um, I would have said earlier, I did a part of the, uh, back of school batches tomorrow, or next Friday, at Free Will and OE, OE, if anybody's interested in coming.
Okay. Anything else? Could I get a motion to go into executive session to discuss negotiations? Pam and Matt, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? For the public, uh, we will have to come back, and we will have to reconvene, but we will not be conducting any additional business this evening. You're welcome to stay, but nothing will happen. Thank you for attending.